Good evening. It is 7:00 PM. I am the Deputy Town Clerk Margie Tachi. Before we get started, I have a few announcements. Tonight's regularly scheduled Herndon Town Council work session is a virtual meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3708.2 as amended. The Governor's executive orders as amended and in accordance with Ordinance 20-0-23, continuity of governmental operations during pandemic disaster COVID-19, as amended and readopted by the Herndon Town Council on September 8, 2020, which supersedes previously adopted amendments. Proper notice of the electronic meeting was provided in accordance with Virginia Code of Virginia. Agenda and meeting materials along with the information for viewing the meeting and submitting comments for the record are available on the town's website. The meeting will begin with a roll call to determine its quorum and all votes, including adjournment will be by roll call vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Margie. I will call the September 15th Town Council work session to order. And before I ask the clerk to please call the roll, I would like to say for the record, I've been advised that Councilmember Baker will not be present this evening. So, Madam Town Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Town Manager?
Ashen, present.
Town Attorney?
Yates, present.
Olum?
Olum, present.
Baker is absent. Delagula?
Present.
DeCol?
DeCol, present.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, present.
McKenna?
Okay, I could not hear Mr. McKenna.
I'm sorry about that. McKenna is present.
Okay, I do see that you are present.
Merkel.
Merkel is present. And for the record, we do have a quorum electronically. And once again, I will remind everyone to please physically raise your hands so that I can call on you for discussion throughout our meeting this evening. I'm going to ask everyone to please mute, and I will recognize our Town Manager, Bill Ashen, for comments. Mr. Town Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It has been our process over the past many months on these meetings. I open the meetings with some COVID comments related to the emergency itself. What we're seeing right now from my conversations with Fairfax Health is that Fairfax County is experiencing a low disease burden, and the community transmission is low. They have seen some minimal increases. So, something that we're doing is clearly working, although to talk to county health, they are still not satisfied. We need to do more of it. So, with that in mind, also this week, and actually the past few weeks, staff has been working on some training that is being mandated out of Virginia Occupational Safety and Health Administration on, to inform our staff on their rights under COVID and the processes that we have to protect them under COVID and to also give them a better understanding of what they need to do to help participate in being part of the solution, not part of the problem. Moving on, they, also my conversations with county health, they are getting more aggressive with testing to include testing within the town of Herndon. They are looking to, in their labs in the county, not just the private labs, but the county labs, looking to double their capacity in the coming weeks, and they feel very confident in being able to do that, which is a very hopeful sign. The message that continues to come from them is that although we are in a okay place, the phase that we're in will be in for a very long period of time, and we need to strive to do better than we have been doing. So, we all, we need to remind everybody the same messages a time and time again. Wear masks. Keep six feet distancing from other people. Wash your hands with regularity. If you're sick, isolate, see your physician, and seek testing. If you're exposed to a positive, you should be quarantining yourself so that you don't accidentally spread beyond yourself. As far as the town itself, next week is, we're going to discuss later tonight, I'll be giving the State of the Town Report. During that report, I've asked Jenny Tripoli to present to you all the FY 2020 numbers, the budget, the numbers where we ended up the fiscal year, and to discuss where we are starting out FY 21 related to our fiscal situation. Jenny has been working, doing yeoman's work, working overtime on these things, and she will, she'll be presenting that as part of my State of the Town Report next week. That's all I have right now, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Are there any questions for the Town Manager regarding the emergency or any of the comments he just made? Anybody? Caesar?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Delagula. Mr. Ashen, thanks for that update. There seems to be a little bit of a conflicting consensus on this, and maybe you can help me. I had a question. What's the guidance or recommendation around people that have tested positive in terms of distancing or, what's the consensus? Should you completely avoid them? Are people safe? I mean, what's kind of the latest guidance on that?
The latest guidance is that people that have tested positive that are still have the active virus in them should be isolating. So, they should be in a room by themselves, they should have access to a bathroom by themselves. And if they don't, Fairfax Health can help them with that. So, and Fairfax Health will be reaching out to anybody that tests positive. Fairfax Health will call. Yes?
Let me ask the clerk sort of different way. I'm sorry. So, they've since recovered?
Yes.
And it's been 30 days?
Well, in that scenario is my understanding that they are free to, as long as they're cleared by their physician, they're free to enter back into whatever they were doing, and they're perfectly fine. Case in point, staff has had positive COVID patients on staff, and we have kept them out into, in a special leave category that they didn't have to use their own sick leave for. And once we get a clear doctor's note, they can return to the workforce. And they have successfully reintegrated back in the workforce.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the Town Manager regarding the emergency? Anybody? Okay, thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Before we get into our agenda, I will ask whether the clerk has received comments for the record or any transactional disclosure declarations from council on any items listed on tonight's agenda.
Yes, Madam Mayor. Comments were received on General Item Number 11, which is Resolution 20G45, initiating consideration of an amendment to the 2030 Comprehensive Plan and the proposed legislation discussion item, all of which were provided to council and entered into the record. No disclosures were provided by council on any items listed on the agenda this evening.
Thank you, ma'am. So, that brings us to our public hearing items. We have several on the agenda this evening, the first of which is Ordinance 20051, to approve the conveyance of a power utility easement by quitclaim deed to Virginia Electric and Power Company, Dominion Energy, Virginia, for transportation facility improvements for the Van Buren Street Improvement Project on property owned by the trustees of St. Timothy's Episcopal Church at 432 Van Buren Street. And I believe we have our Deputy Town Attorney, there she is, Lori Sigler, for the staff report.
Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the Town Council. This matter may sound a little familiar to you. You did see several other quitclaims to Dominion on last month's agenda. This is an easement that the town acquired for the Van Buren Complete Streets Construction Project. This easement is located on property owned by St. Timothy's Episcopal Church. If you recall, the Van Buren Project is for certain improvements of Van Buren Street between Spring Street and Herndon Parkway. And next slide. The area that the town acquired is shown in yellow, and it was 14,362 square feet. The plan always was for the town to acquire this easement for eventual conveyance to Dominion Power. And the town acquired the property interest actually by a certificate of tape that was recorded back February 20th of this year. And now, we are going to be, the town paid the property owner for the easement because it was part of the construction plan. And it was much simpler for the town just to pay the property owner directly rather than having to funnel the money through Dominion. And so, now Dominion is wanting us to convey, like I said, their interest back to them. And that is all I have. I will take any questions.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Sigler this evening? Anyone? Okay, and was, I believe John Irish is also here. Does he, does Mr. Irish have any comments for this or?
I'm here in case there's questions.
Okay, so, all right, thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Irish? Signy?
I just want to make sure I understand this correctly. We got a quitclaim for the St. Timothy's property, and now we're conveying the property, which we currently own, to Dominion Power, and we have paid the homeowner directly without, okay.
Yes, this is Deputy Town Attorney Lori Sigler. Ms. Fredericks, right, we accept a complete easement from the property owner, and now we are quitclaiming that easement to Dominion.
Are we going to be doing that with all the other properties that we quitclaimed?
We have actually, this was the last property that I think I will have to bring in front of you for this purpose. We did take care of quitclaiming interests on other properties, and I believe this will be the last one, especially for the Van Buren Street Project, for sure.
Excellent, thank you.
Right, and just to clarify, this is St. Timothy's Episcopal Church, not a homeowner that we're dealing with on this particular property. Any other questions for Lori or for John? Anybody? Okay. Well, thank you very much. So, next, we have, our next public hearing item is Ordinance 20052, to approve the conveyance of a power utility easement to Virginia Electric and Power Company at the Herndon Parkway and Van Buren Street intersection known as Haley Smith Park, 320 and 324 Van Buren Street, transportation facility improvements associated with the Van Buren Street Improvement Project. And once again, we have Lori Sigler here for the staff report. And John Irish is also here to provide input if necessary or answer questions. Ms. Sigler?
This is Lori Sigler, Deputy Town Attorney. Thank you again, Mayor Merkel. This is an instance where the power company needs an easement directly on town property. And if you will go to the next slide, please. The need for this easement also arises due to the Van Buren Street Improvement Project. The red line here depicts the length of the project. You can see it goes from Herndon Parkway to Spring Street. And you will see Haley Smith Park is marked with the blue star. I know it's kind of small, but the park is located right there at the intersection of Van Buren Street and Herndon Parkway. The town has actually requested that Dominion installs some additional street lights as part of the overall improvement project. So, while we will be conveying an easement to Dominion, we are not being paid because, again, this is part of the entire project, and we're getting the benefit of the lighting. And there is, there is a change that I wanted to tell you about, a small change to the plat. Next slide. So, this is a colorized rendering of the easement. The plat that was attached to the right-of-way agreement that you received as part of the staff report, the location has changed slightly. Our engineers continued to work with Dominion and discovered that we did not have a very accurate plat from Dominion. And the staff report also states that the easement area is 7,800 square feet, when in fact, this slide will show you that we only need to convey 7,235 square feet for the easement. Again, it still stretches along the length of the property right on Van Buren Street. And next slide. And this is the revised plat directly from Dominion. And this, again, I will amend the ordinance slightly to reflect the smaller acreage, and then this plat will actually be attached to the ordinance if it's passed at the public hearing. Again, it's just a slight difference in location. This plat is more accurate with some extra measurements on there. The easement is limited to 40 years. It's a 40-year term, and that is because the Virginia Constitution only allows towns to convey a property interest for no more than a period of 40 years. So, chances are, this is going to renew again after that period, but there's a special addendum to the right-of-way agreement that limits it initially to 40 years. And that is all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions? Anybody? Sheila, is that you? Sheila?
I don't really have a question. Dave, much as you haven't driven by there, it's really getting exciting because I go down a couple of times a week. So, if you haven't been by in a while, you might want to go down. Going to show you one of our big projects that we've been awaiting in Herndon for at least 30 years, from Dupurition, a walkway to the metro.
Thank you. Any other questions for Lori or for John on this item? Okay, thank you. You already answered my question, was what happens in 40 years? Some poor council is going to have to look at this and decide what to do. So, thank you for that. Finally, I think we have our last, make sure I skipped one. Our last public hearing is Ordinance 20053, will sound pretty familiar, is to approve a conveyance of communication system utility easement to Verizon, Virginia LLC, at the Herndon Parkway and Van Buren Street intersection for transportation facility improvements associated with the Herndon Parkway and Van Buren Street intersection, intersection project. And once again, Lori Sigler and John Irish are here for the staff reporting questions.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. This is Lori Sigler. We're switching to a different construction project now. The easement that's needed to grant Verizon is, this is due to the Van Buren Street-Herndon Parkway intersection project. Next slide. Here is just an overview aerial of the intersection. You'll see that the town-owned property is located in the southeast corner of the intersection that is marked by the blue star. This is next to the Metro Square condominiums, the two-over-two development that's there. The town, as part of that development, was conveyed this parcel as open space. It remains vacant. There is a current Verizon facility. It's a little, it's a box that sits above the ground, and that box will have to be moved to accommodate the improvements the town is putting at this corner, the cycle track and the pedestrian walkway. So, we're simply shifting the easement from one part of the property to the other. Next slide. So, again, just, I had a, just a brief overview of the intersection project. Again, it's going to relieve construction congestion, improve safety at the intersection, help with some of the stormwater and flooding issues, also provide more continuity of pedestrian and cycle facilities ultimately to get to the metro station. Next slide. Here is a colorized picture. You saw this last month for the intersection project, where the different colors show the different property interests we had to acquire from other properties as part of the project. The town parcel you see is the only parcel with that magenta color on it. And that, where the magenta color is, that is the location of the easement for Verizon. It is 468 square feet. Again, we are not being compensated for the easement because it's necessary in order to continue the improvements that are part of our larger construction project. Next slide. This is the actual plat that will be attached to the deed of easement when it's conveyed to Verizon, again, with the easement area there being highlighted in yellow. And again, this easement will also have the same 40-year term limit like the Dominion easement did. And unless there's any questions, that's all I had for this.
Could I add one? Lori?
Certainly.
This is John, this is John Irish, Deputy Director. The reason this easement comes about is currently the Verizon equipment in lines are going to be right in the way of where the improvements are. So, we're basically shifting the equipment. The only place that makes sense is to push it over to where this yellow location is shown. So, that's what's causing the need for this easement now as opposed to prior.
Thank you. Are there questions for either Lori or John on this item? Okay, thank you. I just want to echo the Vice Mayor. It's been, these projects, I remember several terms ago when we were first looking at it conceptually, and it's exciting to finally see some action going on over there with these projects. So, thanks for all the hard work. Next, we have several general items, and as a result of our updated continuity of government ordinance that we adopted last public hearing, we've got several items that have been long awaited to get back on our, on our agenda here. So, we have quite a few things ahead of us. The first thing is Ordinance 20054, to appoint members to serve on the Police Supplemental Plan Administrative Committee. And I believe I am recognizing the Town Attorney for this item. Madam Town Attorney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Lisa Yates, Town Attorney. The town's 401A Police Supplemental Deferred Compensation Plan was implemented back in 1979 with updates over the years for consistency with IRS regulations. The plan provides a monetary contribution from the town to sworn police officers upon retirement as a percentage of their pay, which has varied over the years, but currently it's 4%. You may recall, there was a benefit partner of this deferred compensation plan, which was a medical stipend for retirees and a reduced contribution to the 401A plan, which started in 2003. That benefit was found to be financially unsustainable and not consistent with IRS regulations. That benefit ended in 2016. Since then, it has just been the 401A plan, which is known as the Police Supplemental Deferred Compensation Plan. This plan, the documents, require that council appoint by ordinance an administrative committee. This committee is to consist of a chairperson and at least two, but not more than eight additional members. There is also an administrator of the plan, and that administrator is non-voting. Some members of the administrative committee that were previously appointed by council no longer work for the town. Therefore, it's necessary to appoint new members to replace them. Additionally, staff is recommending appointment of one additional police member to ensure continuity. This will bring the number of committee members to six. Current members who were appointed by the previous ordinance in 2016 will continue, and will continue to serve, are Chief Maggie DeBoer, Chair, Jerry Schultz, Deputy Finance Director, and both of those are voting members, and Tanya Kendrick, the Director of Human Resources. She is a non-voting member and the plan administrator. The recommendation for the new members who represent three different ranks in the police department are Captain Justin Dwyer, Sergeant Chad Finley, and Senior Police Officer Drew Stanley. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. What questions do you have for the Town Attorney? Anyone? Signy?
Signy Friedrichs? I'm not understanding how appointing these, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, I just don't understand how we're ensuring continuity by appointing people who were never on it before.
Well, the ones that were on it before are now gone. So, there's no one, there's not a sufficient number left.
Oh, okay. It's not continuity of, okay.
Yes.
Got it.
Need to appoint new members, and by appointing different ranks, we won't have people that retire very quickly. So, I think that's what we meant by ensuring continuity.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other questions for the Town Attorney? Anyone?
Also, Tanya Kendrick's present too, if anyone needs, wants, would like to ask her any questions.
Oh, thank you for reminding me of that. So, my question was, it says staff has recommended, who is, who is involved in recommending? I mean, I would assume it probably involves the chief since it's police-related, but I was wondering, who is the staff that is recommending these officers in particular?
I'm going to let Tanya answer that question.
Good evening. Madam Mayor, Council. To answer your question, Tanya Kendrick, Director of Human Resources. The chief was the primary person who made the recommendation. I work with the officers on a very frequent basis of many different ranks, and so I was involved with that as well as the plan administrator. It's my job to administrate these things. And Lisa Yates was really the facilitator in it. So, the chief was the primary person who made the recommendation, and I support it.
Okay, I was just curious.
Sure.
Thank you. Are there other questions for Lisa or Tanya? Anybody? Okay, Signy, did you have another question?
I'm sorry, I should have asked this before, but what is the purpose of this committee? What decisions or advice do they give?
I can answer that question. Tanya Kendrick, Director of Human Resources. So, the committee is required in accordance with the plan document, and the committee was put in place, as, as the Town Attorney was saying, the plan was put in place in 1979. And so, the decisions that are made are recommendations to the Town Manager and Town Council if there was to be a change in contribution, you know, kind of what we were talking about a little bit before of some of the changes that had happened in the past. So, really just recommendations. There is not a lot of active work to be done on the committee at all. It is more of an administrative requirement of the plan document.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you. Any questions before we move on? Anybody? Okay, thank you, Lisa and Tanya. Is, with concurrence of council, could we place this on consent agenda for next week? Does that work? If there's no objection, we will move that to consent. Our next item is Resolution 20G39, to accept the State of the Town Report fiscal year 2020. This is every September, and I'll recognize Town Manager to brief us on that.
This is Delashen Town Manager. As I mentioned earlier today, we will be presenting this next week at the public hearing, that is the generally accepted practice that we've had in place, the code, or I'm sorry, the charter mandates that I deliver to you, a State of the Town and a report by the end of September. So, historically, we have done public hearings so it gets a more widespread audience then. So, I won't steal any of the thunder. I will just leave you hanging with, we have a lot to talk about next week. So, if you want to put that on consent too, that's perfectly fine as well.
I don't think that's going to work.
We look forward to presenting to you. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Look forward to hearing it. Are there any questions? Are there any questions preliminarily before next week? Anybody? All right. Well, we look forward to it. The next item is Resolution 20G41, to ratify a temporary emergency extension of a lease pursuant to Ordinance 20023, continuity of government operations as amended between the Town and Fairfax County School Board. And I will recognize the Town Attorney, Lisa Yates, for the staff report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Lisa Yates, Town Attorney. This item is necessary as one of those items that the Town Manager used the continuity of government ordinance to continue a lease that was expiring with the Fairfax County Public Schools. That lease is for office space over at 397, which is a building that we own over on Herndon Parkway. And the Fairfax County Public Schools have been over there for a number of years. They currently lease 13,593 square feet for offices from us. This temporary emergency extension of lease would extend the current lease, which expired on, or will expire on September 30th. It will extend the lease until December 31st of this year to allow negotiations for a new lease to continue between the Town and the Fairfax County Public Schools. The Town Manager signed this lease back on, at the end of, I'm sorry, at the beginning of the month. And the request is simply to ratify the emergency lease that was signed by the Town Manager.
Okay, so Lisa, this is much like the outdoor dining extensions that we had to ratify. Okay.
Correct, yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Lisa or for Bill about this item? I'm guessing. Okay. I would imagine the Town and Fairfax County Public Schools have had a few other things on their mind, so. Appreciate the work on that. Could we move this to consent next week as well? Is that okay? All right. Thank you. And next up is Resolution 20G42, similarly, to ratify an extension of a license pursuant to our continuity of governmental operations as amended. This is between the Town and Peter Ahmed and Ruth Ahmed for the town's use of the lot at the corner of Lynn and Station Streets for public parking and other public purposes. And Lisa Yates, back to you.
Thank you. Again, Lisa Yates, Town Attorney. And this is a resolution requesting ratification of the extension of a license agreement for use of the lot, parking lot at the corner of Lynn Street and Station Street. And this license agreement, or some form thereof, has been in effect between the Town and Mr. and Mrs. Ahmed for a number of years, many years. The current license agreement expired on September 1st, 2020. Similarly, on August 31st, the Town Manager signed an extension of license. And the license is being granted by Mr. and Mrs. Ahmed. They own the property. They're granting it to us. Typically, we're the ones granting the license, but in this case, they are granting it to the Town. The parties signed the agreement on August 31st, the manager pursuant to the continuity of government powers. And the extension of license extends the term of the existing agreement, the agreement that existed prior to September 1st. It extends through November 30th of this year, 2020. Also, like the Fairfax County Public Schools lease, to allow, the extension allows the parties, the Town and the Ahmeds, to negotiate a new license agreement for that property. Everything remains the same as under the original license agreement, with the exception that the Town will pay $250 more per calendar month for that three-month period of time to use the parking lot. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for Lisa or Bill on this item? Yes, ma'am. Sheila?
And just so, if anyone's listening is wondering what on earth this is, it's part of our public shared parking, is that correct?
Correct. That is correct, yes.
And it's adjacent to the Green Lizard directly across from the Breeze.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, good point. There may be people who are listening who don't realize the Town doesn't own that property, but it is privately owned, and we've had a license agreement for many years for public shared parking. So are there any other questions on this? I'm guessing no. And could we put this on consent next week as well? Thank you. I'm assuming if you disagree, you will flail. So next up, we're getting into it, guys. It's finally here. Item number 10 is an initiating resolution, 20G44. It's a zoning ordinance text amendment, number 2001, which shows how long ago this was, 2001, the first one of the year, to change the term heritage to historic throughout the zoning ordinance and additional amendments within Section 78 of the Town Code to permit issuance of certificates of appropriateness by staff, to broaden the ability of staff to review and issue certificates of appropriateness, and clarify procedures per Commonwealth of Virginia policy. I believe, oh, I see him, there's David Stromberg, longtime No-See, our zoning administrator, is here for the staff report. I believe Lisa Gilloran, our Director of Community Development, is here as well. And this is something that has been a long time coming to get to this discussion, working to bring our heritage and historic guidelines into 2020, so that they are easier and more user-friendly. And anyway, I'll stop talking before I give the staff report. So, Mr. Stromberg, the floor is yours.
Yes, this is David Stromberg, zoning administrator. Good evening, Mayor Merkel, and members of council. It is very good to see all of you. It's definitely been a long time. So this is Zeta number 20-01. And the background for this is there was a meeting between the Town Council and the Heritage Preservation Review Board back in 2019. And at that time, during the meeting, several residents as well as the council really expressed a desire for a change of the name of the district. So staff came forward with draft language specifically for that. And this text amendment was scheduled for initiation at the March 28th Town Council meeting, but obviously was not necessary for the continuity of government, so it was pulled from that agenda. At that time, the draft language was really just limited to the name change. So Heritage Preservation Overlay District was to become the Historic District Overlay. The Heritage Preservation Review Board will become the Historic District Review Board. Then any of the other permutations and misspellings throughout the ordinance will be corrected so that everything would be historic, including what the future guidelines would be, they would be the Historic District Guidelines. So one of the primary reasons for why staff is recommending the name change is because it just causes a lot of confusion. As far as we know, Herndon's the only locality that actually uses the term heritage instead of historic. The Virginia Historic Preservation Office uses the term historic. Anytime staff or the council or the HPRV board members are asked what the difference is between the Historic District and Heritage District, the answer is, there's no difference at all from a regulatory standpoint. It's just a different name. And so another reason to change it is to be consistent with the Code of Virginia. Staff's been trying to change and update different parts of the ordinances, both the zoning ordinance and other town ordinances, to make sure that they're in line with the Code of Virginia. Section 15.22306 is a section of code that grants authority to local governments to regulate preservation of historical sites and architectural areas. Historic and historical are used throughout that section of state code. Heritage isn't used anywhere. So while this text amendment was on standby, the work was still continuing between staff and the consultants to move forward on the guidelines. And part of that work involved developing a process to allow staff to administratively review and approve or deny certificates of appropriateness for some of these minor projects. But to actually change who is eligible to be an approving or denying authority, it requires a change to the zoning ordinance. You can't just put that in the guidelines. That's not enough to make it actually be legal. You have to do it both in the guidelines and the zoning ordinance to allow somebody else to be able to approve these certificates of appropriateness. So under the existing language, the board can approve or deny certificate of appropriateness, and they're the only ones. Almost everything has to go to them. There's just a few items that are exempt from requiring a certificate at all. And then there are some items that are pre-approved. But it's pretty much limited to extremely light things, so, you know, skylights on the back of a roof, window planner boxes, some types of fences and paint colors for residential properties only, not for non-residential. So under the draft proposal, the board would still be approving these larger types of applications. Staff wouldn't be doing that. What staff would be reviewing and approving are projects that are pretty common and recurring throughout the district, things that you see fairly often. So some examples of that could be material changes, additions to the rear of a structure, some types of window replacements. And then if there isn't a project that fits in nice and easily into one category, staff has the option to push that up to the board for their review. So some of the other changes that have been made since March are clarifying some vague language that's in the ordinance. A lot of times, we get some projects that come in and are reviewed as an alteration, but in essence, they're really almost fully demolishing a structure and then fully rebuilding it, and there's just a tiny piece left of what the original structure was. And there are different standards of review based on what you're actually doing. So we've gone in and changed that language. So if you're doing less than 49% of a replacement of all of your facades, or less than 49% of the actual structure of your roof, that's just going to have to meet the standards for alterations, which is pretty much what happens now. But if you're doing more than 49% of the facades or 49% of the roof, then it kind of kicks in those standards of demolition and some of the standards for new construction. So it's just a little bit more in-depth review. And how you evaluate it is a little bit different. There's a few more criteria because you're doing more work, it's over 49%. And another change is to distinguish between standards and considerations. Now, pretty much through most of that section of the ordinance, it says whether or not statement. And that doesn't belong in a standard section. A standard is something you have to meet. That's it. A consideration is really just something that helps you guide making a decision, whether that's the review board, or if that's the staff who's evaluating a proposal. And so we've tried to get most of those actually completely out of the ordinance and put into the guidelines. Obviously, there's still going to be some left in the ordinance, but really, the guidelines are there to help the various reviewers make a decision on how to evaluate that. And so we are recommending that the council will approve the initiation to consider this text amendment, and then it would go before the Planning Commission and ultimately back to the council, just like any other text amendment. So I'm available to answer any questions about the text amendment itself. If questions more about the guidelines, Lisa Gilloran is on the line for that. These are obviously related projects, but they are separate from each other.
Thank you. You hit on what I was going to ask, just to, I guess I'll just clarify that. An initiating resolution means that we are saying, these are some things we'd like to consider, and it goes to the Planning Commission for a series of work sessions and public hearings at that level before they make recommendations to come back. So there's still a lot of opportunity for public input and review on the part of the Planning Commission and the Town Council.
Yeah, that's correct. There'll be public input, and the draft language could change potentially quite a bit between now and when it gets back before you.
Okay, so passing this next week would just allow that process to begin. It doesn't ratify anything that's in here. I just want to make sure that's clear for the public especially. So what questions do we have for either for David or for Lisa Gilloran? I'm sure we have some. Signy?
This is Signy Friedrichs. I am pretty thrilled about this, obviously, and especially that, you know, the part that bothered me the most was the historic, the heritage preservation. But when you discuss the 49% of a project needs to be, I mean, that's the cutoff for when it can be a staff versus when it goes to the Planning Commission, if I understand correctly.
HPRV.
The HPRV, sorry. Do they, that's a very exact number for a really kind of usually crumbly object. Does the homeowner say, you know, it's less than 50%, or do you have some sort of way of measuring, or is it just a guess?
Yeah, to clarify a little bit on the 49%, that's depending on what standards you have to meet, regardless of if it's staff or the board who would be reviewing and approving it. I don't, I'm pretty sure there's not going to be any projects over 49% of change that staff is going to be reviewing. Those are all going to the board. But it is possible that there could be some alterations to a structure under 49%. That will still go before the board. It'll just, the standards you have to meet are a little bit less stringent for that less than 49%, because it's really a different nature of project. So for the facade part, we would really just look at square footages. When you submit your plans, you have to identify what's changing. You just add up, divide, and then get the numbers for percentage. And same thing with the roof. We look at the parts that you're actually altering. And 49% is what we found to be most consistent with the other historic districts in this area.
That was my question. Where did 49% come from? Signy, go ahead.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Who else has questions? Anybody? Cesar, and then the Vice Mayor, following Cesar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I think, David, appreciate that. I was hoping to possibly see something that might be a little bit more helpful for certainly the public and certainly me. Use case examples, like we were talking about this kind of verbiage, it had this type of meaning, or it was implicit in its meaning this way, and now sort of the new version assumptions going forward. I think some examples of that would kind of help with some of the questions that I know are going to be out there. Is that possible? Is that kind of a big, big ask?
No, that's a great suggestion. We'll make sure that those are included for both the Planning Commission and when it comes back before the council, because I think having those examples will really get the average person to understand it a little bit more.
It'll help us kind of focus some of the discussion, you know, on these items rather than, you know, someone saying, it's all great, or it all sucks, or none of it makes sense. So for me, that would be helpful. Thank you.
Okay, Madam Vice Mayor.
This is Sheila Olum. How long do you think this will take before it comes back to the Planning Commission, from the Planning Commission? Are we talking a month, two months?
That's probably a little bit hard to say right now. David Stromberg responding. I think we'll know a lot more after that first meeting of the Planning Commission and how many comments arise through that. That's usually when we get more of a feel for how long it'll go and how many meetings before it would head back to the council.
So they may actually look it over on two or three different public hearings to interact with the public?
It's possible. I mean, those are all public hearings, and we've had some that it's only one meeting, and then it goes back to the council. And then we've had some, if you remember, short-term rentals, which had quite a number of public hearings before going back.
Okay. Because I'm sure that will be a question we're asked, though I was just trying to get an idea. Thank you.
Thank you. My gut is it will be with the planning commission for a bit of time because that's where a lot of the nuts and bolts and a lot of the real working through happens. Some items have a timeline of 45 or 90 days or something that they have to come back to the council. Is this one of those types of items?
No, not when it's town-initiated.
Okay. Oh, that's when, if an applicant initiated it, we have more of a timeline. Okay. Thank you for reminding me of that. Okay. What other questions do we have for David or for, don't forget Lisa Gilloran's here? Anybody? No? I don't have a lot of questions either. I am just, this is one of the items that was definitely left hanging out there during the six months that we were kind of in a holding pattern, and it's something that's important to a lot of people, so I look forward to this passing next week and having the planning commission dig in and bring it back to us. Is this something that we would want to put on the consent agenda, or would we like to have this discussion at the public hearing next week? I'm kind of feeling like we want to have it at the public hearing, but I could go either way. A lot of times, zetas do go on the consent. Anybody? Cesar.
I think there's been some, I'm sorry, this is Councilmember Delagula. I think there's been enough interest in this. We should at least discuss it. It's going to be at a high level, and I'd like to see the use cases, if possible, for the next meeting.
I tend to agree with that as well, and maybe a couple of examples, and then my guess is maybe the use cases may come up in the public, or the planning commission sort of digging through, but I think those are good suggestions. So, we'll keep this one up for next week. Thank you, David, and sorry, Lisa, we didn't call on you, but maybe next week. The next item is another initiating resolution. I think this is going to garner some excitement from the council. It's a 20G45, Consideration of an Amendment to the Town's 2030 Comp Plan to Change the 2030 Land Use Plan Map for the Residence In Property 315 Eldon Street from Business Corridor to Adaptive Area Residential. And I'm going to turn it over to Bill Ashton for a little introduction to this potential project, and then I believe we have Dana Hyberg here for additional information.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Bill Ashton, Town Manager. In a moment, I'll be, this is over to Dana Hyberg, getting the nuts and bolts of this. Before we go there, I just wanted to say, this is one of the housing projects that I've been talking to you about in very general terms. This is a remodeling effort that will occur if it is, if everything falls into place, that will bring to the town in excess of 100 workforce housing units to the town. But before we can do that, because of where it is, how it's presently zoned, we need to take a look at rezoning it for this to occur. They need to delve more deeply into the nuts and bolts of that, but I just wanted to clarify with you all that this is one of the three areas right now that staff is working on to address housing need in the town and in the county. So, with that, if I could turn this over to Dana, and if you can delve more deeply into it, I'd greatly appreciate it. Thanks, Dana.
Thank you, Mr. Town Manager, and I believe Dana is here, audio only this evening, and while he's getting set. This is an interesting opportunity that COVID actually may have nudged a little bit on because this is a hotel property that I understand is an older model of this Residence In brand that may not have been, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn, but it may not have continued as a hotel following this crisis. So, this may be a very interesting opportunity for all of us. So, I'll stop talking and turn it over to Dana. Hi, Dana.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members, Dana Hyberg, Senior Planner. If I could have the next slide. This is, of course, an initiating resolution, and I think you're familiar with the location. This is what it looks like on the Fairfax County tax map, 315 Eldon Street. If I could have the next slide, please. The aerial view gives you a bit more information on the location there, south of Eldon Street, north of Grove Street, just west of Hernan Parkway. To the east there, you can see the Sugarland Run Trail in the park area. Just to the west of the site, there's a vacant piece. Beyond that is the atrium building, as it's known, 381 Eldon Street. To the south there is Grove Street. The site does have access from Eldon Street, also Hernan Parkway, and also Grove Street. So, we have several access points. There are 168 living units on the site in several buildings that, of course, you can see. It's a 6.4-acre site. Next slide, please. The comprehensive plan currently, you can see the red arrow pointing to this property. It is within the business corridor designation, which many of the properties along Eldon Street in this area are part of that category. It includes retail, services, hotels, and other such properties. And so, you'd be initiating an effort to consider moving this particular property to Adaptive Area Residential, which is the orange color on the comprehensive plan. Adaptive Area Residential appears in several locations in the town, usually one specific property at a time. It encourages redevelopment. Next slide, please. So, the resolution would initiate the formal comprehensive plan and then the process. It would refer the item to the planning commission for study and recommendation, and the planning commission is to prepare a plan and a plan amendment and submit it to public hearing within 60 days of your referral per the code. And then, of course, the planning commission recommendation then comes back to you, and you may deliberate on this item. Next slide, please. I thought I'd mention the, a couple of additional things. The process to, if anyone would wonder, what is the process to convert this property to multifamily if this plan amendment that you're initiating is eventually approved? And so, the type of process that we're looking at, we would be looking at an amendment to the zoning ordinance to create a new variation of the PD dash UR zoning district. That's Plan Development Urban Residential. So, a zoning map amendment would be needed for the property to change it from its current zoning, CS, to this new district that would be created. And then, of course, you would then need construction permits for physical changes. We don't anticipate that there are, you know, major building footprint or other site changes, but if there were a site plan amendment, we'd need it to be undertaken if that were the case. The information we have at this time is, the interest is more in working with the site as it exists. Next slide, please. So, the alternatives for you are to approve, the resolution is drafted, referring the item to the planning commission, or you could continue this item and provide further direction to staff. So, the staff recommendation that we anticipate for the public hearing would be to approve, and I believe, well, I have just some additional points that I'd like to bring out. Had some discussion with the Director of Community Development this morning, and just briefly, want to bring out to you that the property owner feels they have an obsolete product, and they want to renovate, and they do want to provide, over 50% of the housing is workforce units. Now, the details of the workforce housing would be worked out during the rezoning to this new district. The form of this particular property, in the opinion of staff, it's really conducive to residential use, and that's in contrast to some other properties, typical hotel properties. But this property, we really feel it is conducive. For instance, it has a whole series of outdoor amenities. There are lawn areas and seating areas and game areas and so forth. So, it has those characteristics. And I would say that concludes the staff report, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Dana. Let me switch my screen so I can see everybody. Okay. What questions do you have for Dana? Signe.
Hi, Dana. This is Signe. I am pretty familiar with this property because when I worked for the Chamber of Commerce, we used to have meetings there fairly often, and we got forcible tours because they did a huge upgrade to the property about six years ago, and so they were just like, you must see. And speaking to what I think Councilmember Delagula has said in the past, it is really set up for lofts, for very small, in most cases, small living areas, and it's got the swimming pool, as you mentioned, and all that stuff. My question is...
I think, I believe the pool has been covered in, if I'm not mistaken.
Well, okay. It's still nice. But my question is, how, that area where it's located, if we rezone it, is very close to Metro, right? It would be a pretty desirable property once Metro goes in there. How are we going to make sure it stays workforce housing and doesn't, you know, upscale?
Well, the typical mechanism to achieve that would be something such as a long-term agreement, such as 30 years, where the units would have to meet a certain affordability for workforce category and income levels. And so, I believe that that could be accomplished through specific agreements with the property owner.
So, is he offering, I'm sorry?
Madam Mayor, from me.
Certainly.
This is Bill Ashton, Town Manager. That was one of the biggest holdups in getting us to this point in talking to the developer because we were very interested in making sure the mechanisms would be in place to assure that it would be workforce housing at a certain percentage of AMI, and that we could hold the developer to that. I can say a couple other little things about this project. It is outside the half-mile radius for Metro, so it's not directly close. It's a bit of a hike. The second thing I would say is, this is a first-generation Residence In, so it was one of the first models they built. They're now on Generation Six, by what I understand. This is truly an obsolete product for Marriott, and they were looking, they're looking to keep a flag anyway, so we're not sure what this would end up being once Marriott pulled their flag. The other element to this too is the developer that owns the property now has done this type of project in first-generation Residence In's throughout Texas and other places in the country. So, that was the other appeal. This is not something new for them to do. This is something, they have a template and a model, and they were showing us some of the interesting things they were doing to convert these units into workforce housing units. So, that was another appeal in the conversations with the developers. But as far as making sure, as Dana's pointing out right now, it's going to be, the devil's going to be in the zoning details, and it is something that we're going to work out, and they, and so far, the developer's committed to it, and they have a track record of doing this elsewhere. So, I see the commitment. That was something that was very important to me, to make sure the trust was verified. And we've talked about this in other projects recently. The trust but verify element was very much at play, and we would not be bringing it to you if we don't think we can build those mechanisms in place.
I think this is pretty exciting, and I really hope that the planning commission agrees because it's perfect, as far as I understand. Thanks. Thank you. To add on to what Mr. Ashton was saying, this property owner approached the town, not the other way around, so that's how this initiated. And while it is outside of the half-mile radius for Metro, it is right on Eldon Street, so there are bus routes that are easily accessible, and also, it's easy walking access to several grocery stores and other amenities like that that the residents would need. So, from that perspective, it is a great location on the outside, it looks at least. What other questions do we have? Signe, were you, did you have more? I'm sorry. No. Cesar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Delagula. Even though they came to us, I'll still give you guys all the credit. This is great to be brought before us. First question, tongue-in-cheek, this is not in the historic district, right?
Uh-uh.
The other thing, the work...
Maybe for Marriott, but not for Hernan.
I was going to echo what the mayor said. Although it's outside that radius, easy bus ride and/or an opportunity for a town trolley, we can definitely get people there. I think workforce people tend to use mass transit, so I think that would be potentially an amenity we could look at, but that's in the future. The other thing I just wanted to comment on is, this fits into, I think, the overall housing plans that many of us have discussed, so I am very much interested in seeing the details, financial potential commitments or obligations for the town, you know, here, now, in the future, and certainly weigh those in terms of whether or not they can certainly be either amended, funded, or, you know, weighed as far as investments or returns. So, I fully support moving this forward. Very eager to see what planning comes back with, so thanks for bringing this forward.
Thank you. What other questions, comments do we have from anyone? I can't remember who I've called on. Madam Vice Mayor, and then Mr. DeColle.
Thank you. This is Shewa. I think you said it was about 160 units currently, and about how many did you say this would, that they're looking to develop this into?
They said over 50%. I'm sorry, Dana.
Dana Hyberg, if I could. It's 168 units existing, and we're not, I believe they're looking to do a very similar number. It could be slightly less. We don't have, I don't think we have a firm indication on that at this point.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Pretty.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember DeColle. I do not have questions, I just have comments. That's why I was waiting till the end to pass my comment. This is really exciting. We're talking about affordable and workforce housing, and we have one possible project that we can build into workforce housing units, more than 50% or 50%. And especially the developer, having that expertise and experience of turning those properties into affordable housing is really promising. So, I'm very much looking forward to this one as well, and let's get this done in a right way, and obviously, I look forward to what planning commission recommends as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from council, or anything that staff would like to add? Okay. And I'm guessing we would like to keep this on our general items for next week to share with the public. Okay. Great. So, we do have one consent agenda item, which is a resolution that changes our meeting schedule for the town council public hearing to go back on a Tuesday since VML has been rescheduled virtually, so there's no concern about that. We can move right into our discussion item. We, Councilmember Delagula, a couple of... We, Councilmember Delagula, a couple of work sessions or public hearings back, I can't recall, brought up the change in the General Assembly gun legislation this year, so I'm going to ask the town attorney to update us on what those changes are, and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Delagula for discussion.
Thank you. Again, this is Lisa Yates, Town Attorney. During the regular 2020 session of this General Assembly back at the beginning of the year, the General Assembly adopted Senate Bill 35 and House Bill 421, which has ended the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-915. The bills, and now the, as effective on July 1st in the Code of Virginia, they authorize any locality to adopt an ordinance to prohibit the possession or carrying of firearms, ammunition or components thereof in any building or part thereof owned or are used by the locality for governmental purposes. Also, in any park, public park owned or operated by the locality, in any recreation or community center owned or operated by the locality, or in any public street, road, alley, sidewalk, or public right-of-way, or any other place of whatever nature that is open to the public. And that also includes public areas that are by or adjacent to areas that are being used for a event permitted by the locality. In buildings that are not owned by the locality, such ordinance shall only apply to the part of the building that's used for a governmental purpose. The Enabling Authority now contained in the Code of Virginia expressly requires that adequate notice of these prohibitions and the locations where the prohibitions exist be given by a sign most often, and how and where the prohibitions will be enforced. As I said, these bills took effect on July 1st. You asked to be briefed on the legislation. I will additionally let you know that neighboring jurisdictions of Falls Church, Alexandria, and Arlington have adopted ordinances just in the last few months prohibiting firearms. So I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that is the Enabling Authority and the information regarding the current surrounding jurisdictions that have adopted.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Cesar, you brought this up, so we'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, first of all, I want to thank the mayor and the rest of the Town Council for the unanimous support to discuss this matter. I think it's important ordinance. We all certainly clear about the families in the town, and I'm glad to hear that other jurisdictions towns nearby have taken the step towards ensuring that safety. I'm comfortable with what you discussed. You know, what, I'd like to hear from the other council members in terms of moving this forward, but I'm comfortable with what I heard. And again, thanks everyone for the support in taking this up.
Thank you. Making sure my, okay, comments from council? Anybody? Mr. McKenna?
Yeah, I, you know, obviously don't have concerns personally. I mean, I have obviously my own personal beliefs, but the thing that I have a concern about, and maybe the town attorney can address, is that, you know, one thing I've looked at is how, you know, obviously at the state level, you know, things have changed in regards to, you know, how we're governed, but at the federal level, we do have some shifting. If you look at Supreme Court cases even from 1886, Prester versus Illinois, you know, US versus Miller, things of that nature, they tended to side with the government, i.e. they believed that the rights of gun owners, for example, were state militias. But unfortunately, or as what's happened in 2008 with DC versus Heller and Catano versus Massachusetts, it's gone toward the individual gun owner. So my concern is, is if we, let's say someone does take action, would the Commonwealth Attorney and/or Attorney General of State be supportive of us in case something does happen in a litigious matter? If that is in case, if that would happen in regards to anything that would happen? That's the concern that I have, because this could bubble up, and, you know, the Supreme Court right now, the way it is, they're shifting the other way. So that's my only concern.
Councilmember McKenna, if the, I understood your question to be whether or not this has been tested in a litigation forum yet?
Correct.
And the answer, the answer would be no, just adopted and effective on July 1st. So there has not been any test cases yet, so we do not know whether the prohibitions would be upheld, you know, in the face of, in the face of challenge by gun rights. So we don't know how that would fall.
Right. And, yeah, because again, I know that we've seen obviously some of the emails and things of like, of that nature, but the part of the Second Amendment that's always, it's also in the NRA lobby, they, you know, they don't talk about a well-regular militia, but they just say the right of people to keep and bear arms should not be infringed for getting completely the first part of the Second Amendment. But I just, you know, again, that's the only concern that I have, is that if this bubbles up past, obviously, state or where it goes in regards to litigiousness and what that would cost, but I do know the current Supreme Court since 2008 hasn't been kind to, you know, it just, it's shifted. And that's my concern. That's, other than that, you know, I think this, you know, I, you know, if you look at things of the past, '93 Brady Bill, even a '68 passage of the Gun Control Act, I mean, those common sense things, but I just have concerns in regards to where this would go and how our current Supreme Court is, that's all. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I saw Signe.
Hi, this is Signe. Ms. Yates, to Councilmember McKenna's question, whether or not the attorney, the state attorney, did you say the state attorney general would be supportive of us? If something has been passed in the General Assembly, doesn't the state attorney have to be supportive of us? Or not so much? Did I make a mistake in that? But to me, it seems that if it's legal in Virginia, then if we are sued for it, Virginia would be litigating, no?
Not, not, I can see where, I could see where that would be the thought process, but-
That's right.
The, the, what was passed was enabling legislation, which allows us to, which allows localities in a Dillon rural state where we have to have authority from the General Assembly. It's authority. Whether or not it is adopted effectively by a locality, applied effectively by a locality, and that would be, that's generally where the cases are going to come from, is the actual implementation of the ordinance. So we're going to, so localities are going to be in that battle as well, whether they would, it's unlikely, less likely, that litigation would attempt to attack the Enabling Authority. But it will probably all be on the table if a case were to come out. I don't know that we, we're kind of in the weeds with litigation, worrying about litigation at this point. The simple, the simple message is that we have been enabled by the state. Previously, there was no authority for localities to adopt firearm prohibitions.
It's always seemed very odd to me that on Wednesday, after our Town Council meeting the next morning, Traffic Court in the same building with us is able to say, you know, "No, you can't have weapons in the building," but we had no right to say that about our meetings. And sometimes we do have people come before us who are really upset about one thing or another that we're not able to help them with. And so I have felt a little concerned sometimes and a little jealous of the court for being able to theoretically protect themselves. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Other comments or questions from anyone on the council? Pradeep or Sheila?
Well, I'm not sure what we're proposing here. I did follow the legislation, so I don't know if the council member was proposing we ban on every piece of property or one certain building, so it's kind of hard to have a discussion on something that there's not really a subject that's defined.
Signe?
So I guess it's up to us as a body to decide where we want to go with this. Do we-
Correct.
-want to say, you know, just in the council chambers or, you know, some other location? It's not, it doesn't have to be an all or nothing. It can be a very tiny part of the property that we own, but one thing that I think is very important, because we've been getting a lot of emails, a lot of emails today, just today.
For weeks.
Yeah, but specifically just like, like somebody hit a button and sent us a whole bunch of very similar emails. And the thing that was striking to me about it is that none of them were from people I know or who live in Herndon. So maybe some of them lived in Herndon, but-
Very few.
There were a few, yeah. Yeah, and I know that there are people in Herndon who are very passionate about the Second Amendment, and, you know, I understand that and have, don't have an issue with that, but I do have an issue with there being no restrictions whatsoever of any kind, and, you know, this was a little bit of a, well, it was a huge blessing, or it could be a huge blessing, but it could also be a real problem. And I would like to get, to hear whether or not we have support from the people who live in our town, because we've got nothing but negatives. And does that mean that, you know, we have no positive feelings about it in town? I doubt that's true, because everybody I've talked to on the street has been like, "Yes!" But I do know a lot of people who are very concerned and worried about it. So I would, if we do something like this, we definitely need to take some time to consider what exactly we're willing to, or desirous of making happen, and then make sure that we get a lot of public comment. Because if we pass something, this hot button, and it turns out that we were wrong, and people in the town do not approve of it, which I think is unlikely, but it's possible, then I think we would probably end up being sorry. So that's all I have.
Madam Town Attorney, did you have something to add?
I do, just briefly, because I neglected to mention it in my comments, and I believe it addresses Councilwoman Friedrich's comments. The jurisdictions that did adopt ordinances had varying periods of study by their staffs. Many of them were at least six months where they, the council board authorized study and report back to the public body. Others were as long as a year, beginning, you know, last, beginning in 2019. So none of these jurisdictions that did pass ordinances did so, you know, without any sort of period of study. There are budget considerations in addition to the actual fiscal, you know, fiscal provision areas. So I just wanted to bring that up as a piece of information that I did not provide previously.
So could, is Fairfax County, I believe they are taking up this issue-
This evening.
-or next week? Is it tonight?
Public hearing tonight.
Oh, the public hearing is tonight, okay.
Yes. And they've had a, they've had a several month period of official study, but I do believe that there was a period of study from the, from the institution of the, or passage of the General Assembly amendments to the state code, they were studying, began studying at that point as well.
So I just, I wanted to say, first of all, this is some sweeping legislation that was passed. This is so different from anything the General Assembly would have even, it would have been killed immediately in years past. And we all know it's a hot-button issue for a lot of people, for and against this idea. And I am a big believer, when there's something that is this hot-button, I don't know a better way to say it, like when we, several years ago, proposed moving our election from May to November, we knew that was going to get a lot of, a lot of people's interest, and we wanted to get a lot of comment, and that was a big change from anything we'd done before. And I kind of feel the same way about something like this. There are so many options in here. We could, I mean, we are now unable to just say, "No guns anywhere, anywhere public at all." Or we could, like Signe just said, you know, particular spots, maybe we would narrow it somewhat. I really, really, really want to hear from the public before we make any assumptions about what Herndon may think. And I just have a ton of questions, too, like, you know, does this include like a shotgun start at a race? I mean, that seems silly, but those are the kinds of things we want to make sure we don't inadvertently prohibit. Anyway, I just feel like that this is something that the council very well may want to take up, but I think we need to be very thoughtful and make sure that we're completely transparent with the public, and we have many, many opportunities for public input. So that's where I stand right now. I've seen a couple of hands, and I can't remember, has everyone that would like to speak the first time had the opportunity? I think, Pradeep, you're the only one who hasn't gotten to speak. I don't want to let other people have the floor if you had comments.
No, you can let other people have the floor. I, I'm in a listening mode right now.
Okay, okay, that's fine. I'm just trying to be very fair with this. Okay, so let me come back to Cesar, because this was your issue to bring up, and I did see your hand.
No, and again, I want to thank everyone for the unanimous support to discuss the topic. I think it's an important topic. So I will offer, I don't like absolutes with anything. So if it's, you know, a will of the majority or the consent of the majority, I think we should at least look at investigating the, you know, certainly the town properties. I can't imagine parks, you know, would, people visiting parks would be comfortable with, you know, open guns and visible, you know, especially when you got a little kid being pushed on a swing. You know, there are reasonable, I think, you know, instances that I doubt very many people would argue. To the point that we got a lot of emails, I think I shared with council, at least the ones I looked at, of the 32, they're from Herndon, and two out of 32 tells me that we have not heard from people within the town.
Agreed.
So I welcome that discussion. I think we ought to focus, you know, start small and make that somewhat palatable. And, again, I don't think anyone here is talking about kicking in someone's door and taking inventory, right? I mean, that's where this discussion goes.
I don't think we're enabled to do that.
Yeah, but that's where people go. I mean, if you read those emails, that's the fear. Let me just say, from my perspe- Let me just say, from my perspective, that's not what we're talking about. I think we're talking about something a little bit more reasonable. And if we start with town, certainly buildings and parks, I think that's pretty reasonable in terms of the requests. And I think it's, for me, it's more of a safety. And we do have a lot of families here. I mean, Herndon's a family town. I don't think it's unreasonable to ask. So that would be my request.
Feedback from the council, Bill?
Yeah, yeah, I agree with Mr. Dogga and the rest of the, I think it's important to be a little prudent on this. And I'll actually use a case study, even though it's something different. It can have the same result. When I was a councilman back in my hometown of Dan Ellen, we had, Dan Ellen, New Jersey, we had two gentlemen's clubs in town. And every year, they would come up for a liquor license. Prior to me being on council, the council would vote against their liquor license. They would go to the ABC in Trenton for appeal, and they would win. The reason why they wanted to deny the liquor license was because it was a gentleman's club. So when I got on council, I said, well, why don't we build a case or do case studies? And then sure enough, in regards to violations that they had X, Y, and Z, on my second year of council, we denied their, you know, because we took the time in a, you know, over a couple of years to, you know, okay, they're doing these kinds of things. These things are happening. And then once that happened, when they went to Trenton for appeal, they were denied. So now Dan Ellen, right now, has no gentleman's clubs. And I think it's because of being prudent. And, you know, again, these are, you know, because when you go to a lawsuit or go into those things, the things that happened, you know, in a town that had a $7 million budget, when you're spending $100,000 on an ABC appeal, it's a lot of money. So, you know, just, I think this would be a great way to start. I think we need to look at, you know, obviously, what the areas are doing. And more importantly, you know, I do think it's important, because, you know, I'm not a, again, my personal beliefs versus what's going on. My mother and I, we used to go hunting together. My mom was not a fan of certain things, and she used to say, if you have, if you need more than two shots, you're not very good. So, you know, I don't think that having, you know, having guns and things like that can be scary for people. I do think we need to look at this. So I'm with the council in regards to that, but I just, I think we need to be prudent about this, because my concern is the backlash. And more importantly, you know, what financial impact this could have on the town if we don't do this correctly, that's all.
So if I could jump in, I, I lost my train of thought. I think that what, it's interesting, we got a flood of emails the day after our colleague said, hey, could we talk about this? I mean, it wasn't an agenda item. There was no specifics. There was no date of a public hearing, nothing like that. And we got a flood of emails because there are Second Amendment groups who are watching for discussions like that, because it's what they're passionate about. We haven't heard from almost anyone in the town officially. And so I would like to propose that we spend some time, kind of anecdotally, talking to people in town, seeing what they think about this, while our staff has a chance to, like, let's see what happens in Fairfax County tonight. Let's, I just don't want to rush into putting this on an agenda before we really have been thoughtful about how to approach this. Because what we don't want is for something that I think the council and a lot of people in the town would agree is a good idea to become a conversation that we're really not trying to have, if that makes any sense. Is there, should we, this is where I wish we could still have our roundtables. This would be a wonderful thing to invite people to come out and speak about. Is there something that we could do? Is there, it's hard in COVID, but do we need to consider like having outreach groups or a committee that discusses this? I, I'm not trying to make it more complicated than it is. I just think that this is something that we should all try very hard to facilitate, a very thoughtful conversation and approach to getting this on an agenda eventually, where it's about Herndon and not about the gun lobby, if that makes any sense. Sheila, and then Pradeep.
Yeah, I can say that I have had some individuals say something. In fact, just yesterday, a friend of mine lives in town. She's single, and she's been thinking about buying a gun, primarily because of the COVID and concern that people have that if people run out of food or they don't have a place to live, they're going to be taking over the country. Kind of a little far out there, but these feelings are real to that person. And she said, if y'all ban us from having guns, and she was very serious that she thought we were going to be taking everybody's gun away. So we do need to be very careful and lay it out there, because when you just say, hey, we're just going to take away guns, we're going to ban guns, nobody knows what that means. I had one neighbor say, so does this mean I can't go skeet shooting and take my gun in my car? I'm going to have to lock it at the club? And I'm like, I don't know. I didn't do this. I don't know. There's nothing on the table. So we do need to be careful. When we had a council that decided that they were going to get rid of anyone soliciting anything, all of a sudden, we could no longer have the school kids doing car washes. So our actions do have consequences, so we do need to be very careful. And we probably do need to have some focus groups and so forth that have town residents, not the gun lobby from West Virginia showing up. But I have heard from a couple of people that do skeet shooting, you know, two single women that were thinking of buying guns that have nothing to do with each other, which to me is kind of scary that someone's going to go buy a gun that's never shot guns. I used to shoot when I was in ROTC, but that's a little scary when people are just going to go out and get a gun because they're feeling afraid. They're usually the ones that do get hurt. So I hope we'll do focus groups or something and figure out what it is we really want to do.
Thank you. Pradeep?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, last but not the least. So I agree with the mayor that this needs more discussion, and I think we have to allow people to participate to, you know, share their ideas as well, because we don't want people to, you know, take it in a wrong way or, you know, take, misrepresent what we are trying to accomplish here. But this is a valid concern, and this is a valid discussion we are doing here. That's the reason why we all agreed to put this agenda in discussion, because something that has been passed by the state and we are talking in a local level as well. So obviously, this is worth discussion, and we have to, you know, I think, allow some time and hear from the people of Herndon, because I agree, all the emails that we have received sound very similar. Looks like, you know, they've been triggered by some organization or some IP address. So this, you know, may be a genuine concern, but does not look genuine to me, to be honest with you, the way those emails have flooded. But we have not really heard what the residents of the town think about, and especially when it comes to gun or Second Amendment, you know, it's always partisan thing. But what we are doing here, what we are discussing here is about the safety of the public, but there are financial consequences as well and other consequences as well that we have to really, really think about. So I think this is worth discussion. And then I think we have to allow some time to get feedback from the residents, you know, whether it's against or for it. And then based on that, and then, yeah, I agree, maybe some kind of study can also be done to understand the consequences and everything. And based on that, I think we can, we can, you know, make a plan to, as to what we want to decide. But this is worth discussion. And I completely agree that we need more input from the people we are representing.
Thank you. I think I saw Signe's hand again. Signe?
And this is Signe. So I'm concerned, I'm a little, I'm very concerned. But if we narrow what we want to do down to, you know, after discussion, down to something very small, like, for example, my worry about, you know, there we are sitting ducks at the town council. If we just say the council chambers while council is in session, or something like that, that seems like it would be more easily accepted than saying, you know, no public building, no town-owned building. However, the, there's a lot of tendency among people who are really worried about their Second Amendment rights to assume that if you do a small thing, then that means you're going to take everything. So it almost feels like a no-win situation, and that's why I do think we need to make sure, as we've all said 43 times already tonight, that we definitely have the support that we need. There is a program in, that we were exposed to at the VML that was some sort of like a free survey monkey type thing where we could talk to citizens and get more feedback. I'm not sure if it would be, I'm pretty sure it would be skewed, honestly, though, because we have, you know, people who feel strongly on both sides and nobody in the middle. But maybe even a referendum might be a way of making sure that we have public support. I know that's incredibly expensive, but I'm just putting it out there.
So, okay. So what I'm hearing, oh, did you have one more thing? Go ahead.
I did. The skeet shooting issue. One of the questions is that the roads in a town are public property. So there is a legitimate worry that if you have a gun in your car, that you are in violation of the law. And I think that's being addressed. I'm not, I think, I spoke to somebody who's a Second Amendment rights person, and he said they had brought that up to the General Assembly. I'm not positive, but anyway, go ahead.
So it's, I think there are a lot of genuine concerns out there, people who genuinely think that we should adopt every single thing that we're allowed to enable. There are people who think we should do none of it. And I think they're all genuine concerns. But I'm concerned about the genuine concerns of people who live in the town. And I think everybody here is as well. So I'm not trying to drag it out with focus groups and study groups. I'm really trying to make the opportunity for there to be real conversations. This is where I think we have an advantage as a smaller jurisdiction. I mean, Fairfax County has a million people. We have 24,000. I think we have a chance to have some real, genuine conversations with people and come up with, when the time comes, exactly the right mix of what regulations we may want to enable. I also think that, I'm really interested, I didn't realize the Fairfax County public room was tonight. Boy, I bet they're having fun. Could we ask our town attorney to, or I guess it probably does fall on you, Lisa, to, with LGA and all of your counterparts and our other jurisdictions, find out some of what they've already gone through, some of the issues? Because I'm sure that many of the same issues are going to come up in all the different places. So maybe if we can have kind of a heads up on what to expect, we can try to temper the conversation to be more reasonable if possible, and then come back to a discussion item again. I'm sure we'll continue to hear from people, but I think we could all get out there widely in our circles and say, hey, you know, we're talking about some reasonable gun legislation. What are your concerns? And try to, we want to have a Herndon conversation. And right now, we know that's not what's happening. And I know some other jurisdictions who've taken this up and have took it up pretty quickly had some really long public comment periods that weren't necessarily the people from their jurisdiction. So I think that, looking, I was going to say, looking around the table. Looking across my table at my screen, I see a group of people here who really want to do the right thing and feel, and I think are glad that we finally have some latitude here, but have concerns about doing it the best way possible. So is there opposition to what I just said? Or does anybody even understand what I just said? Cesar?
Second Ward, this is Councilwoman Delagila. I agree with everything you said. I would also add that you're, we're not going to make everyone happy on anything. So for me, this is no difference. And I'm kind of dispassionate about this, and that's going to offend some people. But again, I don't think any of us here would support an absolute ban in the town of anything. So for the folks that are going to email us, you know, do your research on what we're proposing. We're proposing a discussion. We're proposing looking at different jurisdictions. We're proposing looking at Fairfax County. We are thinking about what our residents want in terms of, maybe they don't want this. Maybe they do. The people I'm speaking to absolutely do. So it's, you know, it's something we should definitely explore. And it's, look, we're in these roles to make decisions. And they're not always going to be popular, and some friends or family may hate you for it, but you know, it's what we have been entrusted to do. We make decisions. So my recommendation would be to dovetail on what the mayor has said. You know, let's look at what other folks are doing. Have the town attorney do that research and bring something back to us that is not an absolute ban and it's not an outright, you know, free-for-all. It's something in the middle that probably should include, as Councilwoman Friedrich said, the council chambers would be a good place to start. If you don't allow them in, when court is in session, why are we any different? We're public officials. So, I mean, I think you start there. You look at the parks, you look at what the county and some of the other municipalities are doing. And let's be reasonable about this. I would absolutely support that. And again, I want to hear from folks that live in the 20170 zip code within the town precincts.
100%.
Right? I mean, look, I appreciate everyone voicing their opinion, but no offense, if you live in West Virginia or Charlottesville, thank you for the email, but I want to hear from the neighbors here. And, you know, that's who we're really trying to, trying to, you know, appeal to here. So I support what the mayor is talking about. Let's have the town attorney come back with something, and it'll be an organic working document. We're not going to decide anything tonight, next week, or next month, for that matter. It will just be a working document.
Well, I hope that, and maybe this is a Pollyanna view, but I know that any type of really hot-button issue can just be a terrible discussion. It's not really, it doesn't end up being about what the body's trying to do. And I think if we could manage to have a real discussion and really reach out to our residents and focus on the people who live here and what they want in their town, that would be a headline in and of itself. So I think that if we all work with that goal in mind and listen to our constituents, we can say this could be a really exciting thing. So, Madam Town Attorney? Also, we all have VML coming up as well, which would be a great opportunity to talk with our colleagues around the Commonwealth. I know it's virtual if you're planning to attend, and the mayor's conference is next week, I just realized. All of a sudden, October's next week. So I think there's some opportunity to talk with other colleagues around the Commonwealth and get some really good feedback, because I would really like for Herndon to do this better than any other jurisdiction has. So this was a great discussion, you guys. Well, I will follow up with the town attorney and we'll see where the discussion leads. But I think, I think we're heading in the right direction. Did anybody have anything to follow up or to summarize? Anybody else?
All right, Signe? I just wanted to thank you, because I thought you and Councilmember Delagila led a very good discussion.
Well, thank you. Okay, so that does bring us to roundtable, and we're finally free to talk about something other than the emergency. So I'm sure there's an item or two on people's minds. So I'm sure there's an item or two on people's minds. So do we, wanted to see who wants to go first? You want me to go down, down my list? How do we want to go? Mr. McKenna, start us off.
I want to start off by saying I have absolutely nothing and just want to get back to normal.
Don't we all? Thank you, sir. Who, I'm going to cross you off so I don't forget you talked. Who else would like to speak in roundtable? Any items? Anybody? Really? Come on now, guys. It's been six months. Signe.
I just noticed that tonight that there's a drug takeback location in Reston at the Fairfax County Police Department. So if you are in that area of town, you can take your medications over to the Fairfax County Police Department and get them disposed of safely. That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Who's up next? Cesar.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's Councilmember Delagula. Full disclosure, I was going to follow Mr. McKenna's lead on I had nothing, but for some reason when Councilwoman Friedrich said drug takeback, I remembered something I wanted to talk about. I believe the General Assembly passed a, I think it was the marijuana, I guess, possession that's been decriminalized. The Commonwealth attorney as of July 1 is not prosecuting those cases. Curious if we in Herndon have taken that lead or are we still prosecuting? And I get that COVID created a backlog. So there are cases that prior to July 1, but since July 1, are, well, give me the, give me the breakdown. Are we still prosecuting? Are we choosing to prosecute versus choosing to drop the charges before July 1 and from July 1 forward?
So I'm not sure who this, the town attorney?
So the, and Councilmember Dagula and I have had some correspondence about this prior to now. So I was able to, first off, the Commonwealth's attorney does not, the Commonwealth's attorney has responsibility for prosecution of felonies in the town of Herndon. Misdemeanors are prosecuted by the town itself and we contract with the town attorney to prosecute those matters. Prior to, the general state of the law is that prior to July 1, if your offense date is prior to July 1, then you are subject to the state of the law as it existed prior to July 1, which possession of marijuana was a misdemeanor. Post July 1, it is a civil offense that is punishable by a fine of $25. That is what the town is, is doing with the post July 1 cases. They are not being prosecuted criminally. They are being, the judges are hearing them and entering the fines.
Yes, sir.
So thank you for that update, but so let me ask the question differently. It's my understanding, the Commonwealth attorney, I'm speaking of Fairfax, is dismissing those charges. Is that not the case?
He may be dismissed, they may be dismissing them in Fairfax County, the town of Herndon, the town of Vienna.
So let me, let me ask the question differently. I'm sorry. Maybe I'll, so if the Commonwealth attorney of Fairfax County doesn't prosecute those cases, why are we still prosecuting those cases where we know statistically they affect the minority immigrant more than anyone else? I'm just curious why we would go after a civil $25, you know, penalty when basically the Commonwealth attorney of Fairfax has said, this is not an issue, let's decriminalize this whole thing. Why are we still prosecuting?
Maybe you have information different than I do. Are you saying that Fairfax County is not, is dismissing cases where civil fines would be applicable?
I have it firsthand communicated to me by the Commonwealth attorney of Fairfax County that they do not, they dismiss those cases.
I've not, that's news to me and I've not.
And you can call Mr. DeSano's office and speak to him to clarify whatever it is I may, may have misunderstood. And first of all, I will apologize if I misunderstood that. That was my understanding. So that's why I'm asking the question. If the county is not pursuing those matters, why are we still pursuing those matters after July 1? It was my understanding that, that the county completely is dismissing those cases.
So, so without knowing exactly what the facts are, I will simply say this, that our, our police force is sworn, as the officers in Fairfax County would be sworn to uphold the law, which the law is currently, that if an individual is in possession of marijuana, they are charged with the possession and the matters brought before the court as a civil matter and the fine, if they're found to have possessed the drugs, is the $25 on the first offense. I do not know whether the Commonwealth attorney would, and we don't have a Commonwealth attorney prosecuting misdemeanors in Herndon, I do not know that the Commonwealth attorney in Fairfax County is even involved. So before, I think that, now that I understand what your question is and what it's based and the information that it's based on, I think that it would be most appropriate for me to verify the actual facts.
Thank you.
And make sure that what's being represented is, is what is the case because that's not the way I'm understanding it from the courts.
Okay.
So I'd like to do that.
And again, I'll apologize right now if I misunderstood it, but I was pretty clear in what I thought I was asking and jotting down. So I would definitely appreciate your perspective after speaking with that office.
Sure.
Thank you. I think we just got Pradeep and Sheila. Do either of you have anything? Pradeep?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have one, I communicated with Bill already about this issue, just wanted to share with the council as well. At the intersection of Herndon Parkway and Ferndale Avenue, near the golf course, there is a small, kind of like pond, which looks very dirty at this time and looks like a breeding ground and some of the, my neighbors actually came asking, you know, as a civilian, we wanted to, you know, start cleaning up the process, but what would be the process to do that? So I have already communicated with Bill and he will come back with the answer, how the neighborhood can go ahead and, you know, start the cleaning process there. But they are very enthusiastic in keeping the town clean, which is very good. That's why I wanted to share with you. Other than that, I do not have anything worth sharing.
Thank you. And Sheila, close it up.
Sheila, we had a very lively Herndon Chamber meeting today. So you guys might want to jump on if you're interested in businesses in Herndon and how things are going and what they're doing to make things happen. And anybody listening that has a small business, come to those meetings once a month. You don't even have to be an actual member of the chamber, is my understanding. They're now virtual instead of, we were meeting at ArtSpace, but one of the things that I thought was pretty exciting is that Next Stop Theater is going to start having a type of musical and they'll have 20 tables, up to 40 people. Everything's going to be really spread out, get some good entertainment and they're bringing in some of the partners in town, the restaurants, so that you can order ahead of time, have your food there, you're going to pay for the entertainment and it's helping them hang on. Next Stop also decided, they got to do something to survive, they can have shows. So they've cleaned up their whole act over there, very sanitary, and they're now renting out their space for movies. So you can bring your own movies or you can go in and type in your own password to whatever subscription you have. And they've got the equipment there at Next Stop and they've made a nice big screen. So you've got your own little private room to have about 16 people in, usually seats a little over 100 and they'll make popcorn and so forth. And they've already sold out. They don't have any room for anybody else. That whole thing of trying to stay away from people and then they took their little venue and they filled it up. So I think that's great. All of our businesses are being real innovative and trying to hang in there and make things happen. So if you want to hear what the businesses are doing, come by the Herndon Chamber meeting next month. Thanks.
Thank you, Sheila. No, I concur. A lot of our businesses are getting super creative and our community has really come to support them. So I appreciate you sharing that. I wanted to just make sure if my colleagues, if you have not had a chance to check your email, there is an update from the town attorney about our follow-up from our closed session last week. And I have survived five days of virtual school with my children and I just think that I wanted to share that with someone. So it's, it is actually, I want to say a shout out, I know we don't have jurisdiction over our schools, but our Fairfax County schools, the teachers are really going above and beyond. And I can speak for my children. I know I spoke with, Bill Ashton mentioned that his son is having a good experience. So I know there's a lot of negative and there's, I mean, this is not ideal, but I really do applaud those teachers who are really killing themselves for our kids. So just wanted to shout that out. And Mr. Town Manager, did you have anything else for us or are you saving it all for the state of the town?
No, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one thing, earlier, late last week, we did announce we will be conducting a fall cleanup, a spring cleanup in the spring. We will be doing a fall cleanup. We think we can pull that off. So stay tuned for dates and all that stuff as it comes out. So just.
I think it's actually out the week of October 21st, the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday of that week. And I can't believe that you beat Sheila to talking about Big Trash Week. Good job, Town Manager.
I was waiting for the vice mayor to say something and just mildly disappointed because that's usually a hot topic for her. But yeah, the dates are out. But of course, you've got to remember fall cleanup, it's going to depend on when leaves come down. There's other elements at play that we have to operationally, but we think we can certainly pull this off and we're delighted to restore that spring cleanup. We'll have to revisit the spring, but I think we can get this one done.
Well, that is great news. So tentatively the week of the 21st, but stay tuned based on leaves and other items as they come up. But I know people are thrilled and we sold out all of our bulk pickups that we were offering. Is that right? So it's definitely a demand.
We extended the program a little bit longer into September and every slot sold out. And then we even accommodated a few people that were in the pipeline that couldn't get a slot and we kind of did a couple extra beyond that. But, but again, that was just our way of saying we understand the frustration about spring cleanup and we're here to serve and that was an appropriate way to come with that backlog.
Awesome. Thank you for that update. So with that, that concludes our agenda this evening.
Vice Mayor? Madam Mayor, the vice mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Mr. McKenna, second.
I think I heard Cesar first, second half.
Yep.
If you guys do get it out. And so I will.
Every few.
I will ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor Merkel. Olem?
Olem, yes.
Baker's accent, Delagula?
Delagula, yes.
DeCall?
DeCall, yes.
Friedrichs?
Friedrichs, yes.
McKenna?
McKenna, yes.
Merkel?
Merkel, yes. And we stand adjourned at 9:03 PM. Thank you, everybody. See you next week.